I'd like to call the meeting to order for January 7th, 2025. I'd like to start with a moment of silence. If everyone could join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I'd like to welcome everyone who has joined us today. We're always glad that you're here. We do follow a written agenda, which hopefully you guys could pick up at the front. This agenda is also available on our website at SalisburyNC.gov/Agendas. City council meetings are broadcast on WSRG, our local government TV station, which is available on Spectrum, Channel 16, and Hotwire, Channel 394. Meeting air times are posted on the station's website, wsrgtv.com. You can also watch current and past city council meetings on demand from the city's website, SalisburyNC.gov/videos. We'll start with making a motion to adjop the agenda.
I'm moved.
We have a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The mayor to proclaim the following observances. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day is January 20th, 2025, National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month, the month of January, and National Mentoring Month, January 2025. Item number six, council has considered the consent agenda. The consent agenda has been received prior to the meeting with the council members. If there's no questions or items you'd like to discuss, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
We have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. As you know, we are here to honor the legacy of Mayor Karen K. Alexander and her service to the city tonight. We know this is going to be hard for our entire city, but she has left a great legacy. And Jason has done a great job on making a small video in her honor. So Jason, if you'd like to play that video now. We'd like to take a moment now to give the council, anyone who works for the city and anyone in the audience that wants to do comment about Karen and remembrance for her. I'd like to open it up first with the council. Harry, do you want to kick us off?
Um, I mean, wow. You know, one thing I appreciate, you know, the papers have said a lot of things. People have said a lot of stuff in socials, you know, the great things, amazing person that she is and she was. And, you know, for me, one thing that I took was how different she was. And what I mean by that, I, you know, I spent like seventeen years working in so much with the, with the government as far as being in the political scene, you know, following presidents and vice presidents. You were involved in politics even if you didn't want to be, just because of the nature of what it is. And because of that, you know, I just saw how divisive it was and I just wasn't really into it. But when I got to see Karen, it was in a way, she was different. You know, she didn't look at... You know, there's times during this thing, I was like, man, I don't know about this politics stuff, but you know, Karen was, you know, the person who was, didn't look at things political. She looked at things humanity, what was best for the city. It's not so much what was best for the political view that you may have, what's best for what was going on, which was so different from when I came from. I was like, wow, this is, you know, there is something different about politics. And Karen was an example that helped me kind of keep my priorities straight and on the path to be a city council person. Cause I wasn't sure I was going to do this again, because I just thought, man, politics. But Karen was, was different. She was special about that. You know, we saw the video, she was everywhere. And not because it was cool to be there for the photo op, but because she cared for the people. And a lot of personal conversation we had, and that's why we're emotional, but now, but she was a very special person. It kind of helped me stay on the path. You know, it was just unfortunate, some things, but she was strong. You know, she was a lady of faith in which I respected, and that's one thing. And she kept it, kept it real, you know, this is life and things happen. And being of faith, you know, kept her strong. I'm sure kept everyone else strong in their family as well. But I really did appreciate that, that she was different and she cared about people. And the thing that she wanted to do was make sure that it wasn't just for a particular group or organization, a part of the city, but what was best for the city. Cause she knew that the city could be strong by the weakest link. So you couldn't leave anybody behind. She was best. And I would miss her greatly because she helped me a lot sitting here. So.
Thank you, Harry. David?
Thanks, Harry. I met Karen, first of all, when I, there's going to be a little bit of humor in here. When my parents, when I spoke at both my parents' funerals, I injected humor in that as well. So just, I guess, my nature. When I met Karen a lot of years ago, I was coming back and forth to Salisbury from the Washington area. And I knew who she was, but we became reacquainted when I moved back to Salisbury. And we both served on planning board together. One of the first things I learned on planning board and later carried to city council was, you know, the critical importance of having architects and developers, you know, on board, because so much of what we do is land use planning. And it's nice to run a campaign on political issues, but that's not what we do here. And so she was, you know, instrumental in teaching me that. Several years ago, and I'm going to tell a few stories about her. Several years ago, the Leaning Municipalities had an opening on its board. I asked Karen about it. She encouraged me to apply. So I went to the, to their monthly magazine and I looked at the board. There's no city that had two people on it. And she was second vice president, which meant, of course, that she was going to be there for a few years until she had served as president. So I sort of expected to get one of those, thank you for your interest, but letters. And I didn't get that. I got a phone call from the committee. They said, we'd like to interview you for this position. And so I said to them, I know that my candidacy is dead on arrival here. This isn't going to happen, but I really appreciate it. And they said they felt, you know, compelled to to interview me simply because Karen had recommended me so highly and that she was a member of the board that was supporting my candidacy, knowing that, you know, there was no chance for me to get it, but I was the one she picked. So that was an incredible honor. And I was sitting in the county headquarters in 2017 when she lost her, I guess, mayoral reelection bid. We didn't run for mayor back then, but she had weathered a terrible storm. And she was, you know, really not happy, but incredibly dignified. I mean, she sat there, you know, as those votes came in and never lost her composure. Was very professional. And then after it was over, she stuck it out and ran again, hung in there, and then won the next election. So that, that takes real courage. You know, to get knocked off your pedestal in anything that you do and to say, you know what, I'm going to stand right here and I'm going to step back up. And she did that. As, as mayor, Karen's guiding star was consensus and community building. I think Harry's already referenced that, but she wanted all of us to get along and to agree on everything. And on tough issues, she would call us before a vote. She'd try to always get us together to be on the same page. And, you know, after she'd spend an hour with me on the phone, you know, I could always, we could agree on something and we'd be on the phone for an hour. We could disagree on something and we'd be on the phone for an hour. And I'd scratch my head and say, oh, my heavens, you know, she's just done this four times. She's spent five or six hours because she would reach out to every one of us and, and do the exact same things. So, you know, she, she gave her time. I mean, the most precious thing you have in life is time. And she gave her time to the city, to the community and not to herself. And I think it's reflected in those many, many pictures that blew by. This is a hint to HSF, Historic. This is a hint to HSF, Historic Salisbury Foundation. I own a John Ramsey mid-century modern house built in 1958. It was built by my uncle Leon Zimmerman and my grandmother Anna Zimmerman. When I decided to buy it, I was, I'm the third or fourth owner of the house. When I decided to buy it, my brothers and sisters, who all spent a lot of time in the house, walked through it with me. Said, oh, my God, why are you getting this? You know, because one thing about those mid-century modern homes is they had a lot of little rooms, you know, and they were crowded and they're really pretty. And I know it's been in the news lately, but that is a characteristic of it. It was made, it was built, it was designed by John Ramsey, you know, who's also been in the newspaper lately. And so at the time that I bought my house, it was, you know, after this, you know, we were in that 2008 to 2012 crunch. I was executive director of, interim executive director of Historic Salisbury Foundation. I was aware of every house that sold in the city. We didn't have but six houses in those two years that sold for over $200,000. You could get a house in the country club for $200,000. You get a house on the Crescent Golf Course for $200,000. And here I am buying this sixty-year-old house that, you know, looked like it was sixty years old. And, but I decided all those houses out there were too big for me. And the first thing I decided to do was rip out all the walls inside the house. And some of those walls are in the middle of the house, they held the house up. And so I decided to make a bunch of little rooms, a couple of big rooms. And I called Karen and she came over. The first thing she did, she says, you know, we better get an engineer over here to make sure your house doesn't collapse, you know, when you, when you pull those walls out. And so she brought in engineers and contractors and made sure my walls didn't collapse around me when we took the walls out and talked to the contractor about how he's going to hang the walls from the rafters in the roof. And so she kept my house standing. She redesigned my bedroom and she found a way to make my master bedroom much more comfortable and then called my significant other at the time, a woman named Lisa. Asked her about what colors and designs she liked. Then she called me one day and says, hey, meet me out at Lowe's. You know, we got to find something she's going to like. So I went to Lowe's, we walked around Lowe's for an hour and she told me what colors, you know, Lisa wanted and that were going in my house and they're still there today. But the crowning achievement was my kitchen. It was a weird kitchen. And it was, parts of it were pretty narrow. I have two walls that are brick walls and they're pretty close. And, and I wanted an island, you know, that's the modern thing to do today is have an island in your kitchen. And so my island was going to go through my kitchen, through what used to be my dining room, into my living room, which there used to be a bunch of walls that were no longer there. And she told me that the, I remember standing there that day. She, she had done all these computerated designs for my house, for my kitchen particularly. And we're standing there that day and I said, I want this island to go right here. And she said, well, there's not enough room. She said, code says you have to have thirty-two inches on both sides of the island. And if I had thirty-two inches on one side of the island, there wasn't enough room on the other side to have thirty-two inches, because I couldn't move a fireplace and I couldn't move what had been a formerly an outside brick wall. So, you know, my space was limited. She taught me that you have counter-deck stoves and refrigerators that take up less space, but we still had these extra four inches. And so I said, are you going to send anybody over from the city to tell me that my counters not, is too wide? And she said, I'm not going to do that. And I said, okay, well, I want this counter to be right here. And she says, well, you're four inches short on this side. And I said to her, I said, you know, if somebody comes to have a buffet dinner with me and they're seventy, have a seventy-inch waist and they can't fit through here, I mean, twenty-eight inches is big enough for any human, normal human being to fit through. I said, if they can't sit through here, you widen the opening in my foyer. They can walk around and go into my dining room a different direction. So we stood there laughing about, you know, about a twenty-eight-inch counter and said, you know, you're right. And it may violate code, I don't know, but I think statute of limitations has passed on that. But most importantly, as far as my house is concerned, which she, you know, when I go into my kitchen every day, you know, I think about that moment, which is kind of a remarkable thing to happen to you. But, but I love my house, I live in it. She made it more comfortable. She changed the shape of my bathroom. I don't know how you take a bathroom that was designed in 1958 and it's about the size of this piece of paper here. And, you know, you make it bigger and more comfortable. I don't know how you do that, but she did. We ripped stuff out, started over with, you know, where everything went. And I live in this thing every single day and the colors are still there. And every time, like I said, I walk through that fireplace, that twenty-eight-inch gap between my kitchen island and the fireplace, you know, I think of her and I could, all you can do when I do that is smile. So she touched my life in many ways, both in government and personally, as a friend, as a teacher. And one thing that Jews do whenever someone passes is they always, there's a saying, you know, which is a Judaic saying that says, you know, may her memory be a blessing. And I say, may her memory be a blessing to you, to the community, to the city and to everyone here. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
I initially met the mayor through a professional relationship. My work as an electrical distribution designer with Duke Energy. And through the initial meeting, it was obvious the kind of person she was. And over the years, I had the opportunity to interact with the mayor in various committees, such as community appearance and Neighborhood Leaders Alliance and other events. And that same professionalism that she carried during that initial meeting was also carried over in all those various environments. And when, of course, historically, I came to the council to fill a vacancy. I did not run and was elected, but I had to be interviewed by all the various council members for their consideration. And the thing that stands out to me the most about her conversation with me was we never once mentioned, or she never once mentioned, the city of Salisbury, government. It was about family and care and what we can do to help others. I took away so much more from a brief phone conversation than expected. It's, it's a rare quality to be considered a politician and it doesn't show. And in her case, everything she said, I think she truly, honestly believed and felt. And she exemplified those things every day. Our city will carry on and as I shared with the family, hopefully, we have absorbed enough of the kind of care and personality and giving spirit that she exemplified all the time. I want to share a text. I won't say who I shared this text with, but it's, is, "Trust you and your family are well. Thanks for the level set regarding Tuesday's meeting. It will probably be an emotional evening, given the many relationships Karen built over the years as a business professional mayor and most importantly, a model citizen. Her professionalism and leadership are only exceeded by her kindness." That's something we all need to work on. We need to take a deep breath and realize we will be a footnote in history, all of us, at some point. And what will we leave people to remember us by? In her case, it will be a legacy of greatness. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlton. As we know, today's a really sad day, it's been a really sad week. It's one that this city has not fortunately had in the past. We've not had to experience that and of course, you know, leave it to Mayor Alexander to continue to be a trailblazer, right? Doing things first. You know, this past week, I've really struggled on how to grieve her loss. By the way, I'm not there yet, like most of us. And I don't know when or how and however we all do that, you know, it's okay. She would have been that person who wanted to do it, however we do that. I've been, you know, trying to read things and learn and all these things. And I came across this quote from Tristan Armada. And it said, "True leadership is kind and inclusive. The qualities of a true leader revolve around compassion and gratitude. A true leader listens and puts others first." And when I read that, I was like, well, I feel like he was just writing that about Karen. I mean, every word of that said Karen to me. Karen and I spoke very often about how proud she's been over the years of this council. Not just for its diversity, you know, based off of whatever box we're checking. It's, it wasn't about that. For her, it was talking about our diversity and our school of thought, who we were as individuals and our backgrounds and our ability to come together. We've heard some other council members speak about that. However, we got there, right? We had the freedom to be able to get there and make decisions that impacted all of us and kept us moving forward under her leadership. I've served on three different iterations of a council with Mayor Alexander. And one thing she always believed in was the leadership of this collective body that not one of us was over the others. And when you spoke to Karen, like you truly felt like you were the only one talking. David, you talked about you guys talked an hour, whether you agreed or not on something, right? She, she had this unique way and with those crystal blue eyes, you just got sucked right in. And she listened to you and, I don't know, it just... Like you, Carlton, I've, I've had this tremendous outpouring of people who have expressed to me that she just listened to them over the years. I've watched city employees in, in North Carolina League members and other government leaders watch her. And their expression and their eyes, every time they had an interaction with her, told the whole story about how they felt without saying a word. It was respect, it was trust, it was admiration, it was truly just like a sign of love. It was genuine when people, when you saw people talking to her, if you were watching them. Karen put so many people first. This entire community felt that through her leadership. And again, all I can do is thank her family for sharing her with us. She's been a great gift and I know sometimes, maybe at your expense, that she chose her community. And I, I don't know if we can ever thank her or thank you all enough for that. Mayor Alexander is going to be missed, that's for sure. There's no way to be Karen, there's no way to fill this seat. Tribute's very fitting for her this evening. One thing that I would like to say is the city is going to hold a memorial service on Monday, January the thirteenth at 5:30 at the Bell Tower Green. We invite everyone in the community to come out, spend time together. She would have loved being with you. She loves spending time with her community. And so we are going to do a memorial service celebration in honor of Mayor Alexander. Jim, do you have any comments?
Mayor Pro Tem members of the council, I did not know Mayor Alexander as long as many of you have. But in the past two years and eight months as city manager, I've been blessed to work closely with her. While I report to all of city council as a body, any city manager will tell you that the relationship between the city manager and the mayor is very special. Mayor Alexander and I spent much time together in meetings and on phone calls, at events and discussing city business. I cherish the time that we spent together. During my short tenure in Salisbury, Mayor Alexander became much more than an elected official that I report to. For me, she was a trusted advisor, a supporter, a confidant and a friend. I've been very fortunate in my thirty-plus year career in local government to work with many outstanding elected officials and local government leaders. But Mayor Alexander was truly unique and such a positive influence in so many areas of our community. As I worked with her, I learned quickly that she was a person of strong integrity and genuinely cared for her community and others. The mayor was passionate, intelligent, creative and graceful. She had tremendous energy and a work ethic that was second to none. I never heard her say no or turn down any opportunity to engage with the public or staff. She was approachable and involved and she led by example, showing that to improve the community, it takes all of us, rolling up our sleeves, working together and even getting a little dirty, as she would in her gardening duties at Blockwork. It is often said that public service is the calling and our mayor definitely answered that call. Her goal and vision were clear, to make Salisbury a vibrant and caring city that was welcoming and inclusive. Many times I heard her describe our city and her vision as a Salisbury for all. She worked tirelessly to share, lead and implement her vision. No issue was too big, too small or too complex for her involvement and leadership. From potholes and flagpoles to downtown streetscapes and our historic depot, she showed everyone involved that every issue was a priority. In a time when civil discourse and working together for positive change are not always the norm in American politics and government, Mayor Alexander was different. She led from her heart. She did not care if you were a Democrat, a Republican, rich or poor, an old friend or a new acquaintance. She treated everyone to respect and kindness. She treated everyone to respect and kindness. Despite challenges over projects and local politics that come with the position, the mayor maintained a positive attitude, believing in our citizens and this community, that good things were going to happen. When things did not go as planned, she did not criticize, hold grudges, or place blame. If it was important to her and for our community, she stayed true to her values and worked hard to get the job done. Mayor Alexander was so proud of our city and our accomplishments, but she never sought personal acknowledgement or credit, and instead gave the praise to others, especially our hard-working city employees. I send my deepest condolences and prayers to you, Henry, Daniel, and the family. Thank you for sharing her with us and the community. On behalf of the city's four hundred and fifty employees, we thank Mayor Alexander for her support, care, and leadership. Thank you, Mayor Alexander. May you rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Graham?
Henry and Daniel, like Jim said, thank you for sharing her with us. Karen was on council when I was hired, and she's been here ever since as a, for me personally, just as a dear friend. Especially over the last couple of months, the time that I've gotten to spend with her has been very special. It's not for me to share, but I'll treasure it for the rest of my life. But I've treasured my, my role as her advisor, which is a really sort of remarkable position to be in for a woman like Karen. I've only known her as a council member and as a mayor. But long before she was ever on city council, she had such a remarkable career that would have been so much more than any of us could ever done on its own. She's an amazing talent as an architect. Her fingerprints are all over this city. There are little memorials to her everywhere in the buildings that she did, the lives that she touched, even the dais that we're sitting in front of, she designed. And we get to see that every day that we're here. And we get to see it around town as you walk around. Sort of, you know, artists and architects have that ability to leave that tangible legacy everywhere. And I admire that in them generally, but Karen was a special one. And that, again, that was before she was ever on council. That was before she was ever mayor. And then she became mayor. And she was just that, just mayor. That's, it wasn't Mayor Alexander. I call her Karen as an architect and in private, but in public, even when she answered the phone, it is mayor. And it wasn't, it was out of the deepest respect and affection and because she loved being mayor, and she was very good at it. You've heard comments tonight about her approach to politics, which was apolitical and to be celebrated. And the effectiveness of it, I think, is a testament to what politicians ought to be. She was really good, like I said, at being mayor. She was a really good politician. I remember I'd been on council for less than, not on council, I'd been in this role for less, up at the dais for less than a year. And there was a town and state dinner, which the league holds every year, and Lane couldn't go at the time. And so Mayor said, "Graham, come with me." I said, "Yes, ma'am, Mayor, I'll be there." And she had to go up there for her league meetings, and they were going all day. And so I took the train up and joined her for the dinner. And she, "Come meet this mayor and come meet this legislator." So the dinner is for mayors and legislators across the state. "Meet this person, meet this person, meet this person," all over. And everyone was her friend. I remember sitting at dinner, and I think it was the mayor of Tarboro was there. Never met the mayor of Tarboro. I don't know what Tarboro and Salisbury may have in common. They were friends. I think Alma Adams was there, and she's in Congress, which doesn't make sense, but I think she was there, and they were friends. And it just was a testament to the circle of friends that she had made who happened to be politicians. They gravitated towards the mayor because she was, like everyone up here said, just a special, special person. The next year, we went to DC, at the state level. The next year, we went to DC for a conference. And we're meeting, we had a new lobbyist, and they were showing us around, and we're meeting with various agencies and other folks to tell us how to get money to Salisbury. That was the goal of this. And the mayor was on, I think she was on the league board for ten years, it must be. But she was league president at the time, and so she had other obligations. And I remember trying to organize calendars, and the crowning event was a meeting with our congressman at the time, and it seemed to be that it was him checking her calendar rather than vice versa. But when we finally got a meeting with the congressman, he became a fast friend because of her. And because of that, we got, I mean, the specific project we were working on, we got it done because of that relationship. And he's since become a senator, and he was one of the first last week to send condolences. And he's been one of the biggest allies for Salisbury because of Karen. And I don't know how she does it. I don't know how she did it. To have a career as special as she did as an architect and then as profound and impactful as she did as a mayor. And I haven't even talked about the amount of time and effort she spent locally. I mean, the folks that share a suite with her know how many hours that she met with citizens. I know the emails that I got, which were a fraction of the ones that the city manager got and other council members got or department heads got about issues from citizens and fix these, and she was on them. She wasn't directing them, but she was communicating with us. How can we help? What can we, as a city, do to help? How can we make everything better? And she worked so hard. And there was no one that she was not willing to sit down with and talk to and make them feel like she was the center of the, they were the center of the room. And so she, I was trying to figure out, how do you do this? Like, what can we take away from a life this special? And the, one, I don't know, I don't think we can. I mean, there's no way to live up to the bar that she set, but we can try. But it seemed to me that the thing that connected her professional career and her political career and then her personhood was this innate ability to see beauty in places and to see beauty in people. But she also knew that it took work to get that out, and she was tireless about getting it out. She got beauty out of places, and she got beauty out of people. And what I will take away from knowing her is seeing that within everyone, giving everyone the benefit of the doubt, seeing the beauty within everyone and with everything, and also knowing that it takes a whole lot of work, working together, to get it out. And she did that, and I am a better person for having known her. And Salisbury is a better place because of her. And thank you for sharing her with us. I love her, and I will cherish her forever.
Thank you, Graham. Connie?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I wrote this on a piece of paper because I don't know if I'll get through it if I don't. Before I start, I wanted to sincerely thank y'all for sharing her with us. She's so special, and we love her so much, and she just changed all of our world. Mayor Alexander was an amazing lady. I don't know how she did it all. The things that stand out to me most are her kindness and compassion. Simply put, Mayor loved people. She was always interested in what was happening in your life, and if you were hurting, she hurt too. It came across in everything she did, and that is why people were drawn to her. Mayor wanted to make the world a better place, and she was a tremendous ambassador and champion for the city. She worked so hard on things that will benefit North Carolina, Rowan County, and the city today and for generations to come. Mayor was a mayor for the people. She attended every event she could, and she gave a piece of herself, whether it was presenting a proclamation in Spanish, honoring a veteran, or attending an employee lunch. Whatever she did, she gave her whole heart. She did it with a beautiful smile, and you knew you were in the presence of greatness. It has been my honor and privilege to work for her, to learn from her, and to serve her as her clerk. I love her. I thank her for everything she did for me, and she is so missed. And I pray that God blesses each one of you in all that you do.
Thank you, Connie. We'd like to open it up for any of the people that work for the city or any citizens. I'd like to call up Adelie Behr. She's our senior administrative specialist to kind of kick this off. Again, this will be a public comment area timeframe about the mayor. If you are here for a different public comment, I will ask again when we get done with this, and that way you can do it as we do provide public comment at every meeting. So if you do have something, if you could just wait until I make that request after we've all had a chance to speak, we all would appreciate it. Adelie, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council and family. I'm grateful for this opportunity to recognize and celebrate Mayor Alexander's exceptional life and service. While the earliest mention of her in the official minutes dates back nearly three decades, we are certain her contributions to our community stretch even further into the past. She invested herself in all aspects of civic life, chairing the Historic Preservation Commission, helping develop a clear path forward on the Interstate Vision Committee, and playing key roles on the Salisbury 2020 Implamation Task Force, the Park Avenue Neighborhood Plan Committee, the Community Development Corporation, the Land Development Ordnance Committee, and the Planning Board. She was a busy lady. Those positions reflect the breadth and depth of her commitment to making her city stronger for everyone. Her leadership expanded significantly when she was appointed to city council in 2013. She then ran successfully in 2015 and proudly stepped into the role as mayor. She was re-elected to council in 2017 and resumed the mayor's seat in 2019 until her passing. Through it all, she guided us with a steady visionary hand, putting the city first every step of the way. Even before she joined city council, her influence was evident across our community. She conceptualized the whole gym renovations, coordinated the police department expansions, and oversaw the construction of Fire Station Four and the Customer Service Center. Through these and other countless efforts, her impact will shape our city for generations to come. We are deeply grateful for her generosity of support, her unwavering resolve, and her faith in our city's potential. It's fitting that she was a professional architect because she leaves us a carefully drawn blueprint for community service, one shaped by her unwavering spirit that will continue to have impact for years to come. May that same spirit inspire us to serve with a wholehearted devotion she so passionately exemplified. It is such an honor and privilege to know her, have served her. I loved her for the past six years as her administrative assistant. No matter if it was assisting with city-related items or her talking about everyday life, she always took the time out of her busy day to make you feel important, and she deeply cared. She is truly missed, but we remember, and shares the memories we have with her, especially a few of her favorite things, her favorite tea, her brownies, pearls, and her love for flowers, as we all know. Thank you, council.
Again, if anybody wants to come up and speak, you feel moved, please, please do so.
My name is May Carroll. I'm the commander of the American Legion, and I'm the vice president of the CDC. This is where I worked with Karen in both capacities. She was well-liked by many of the people on the West End. She also attended our children and youth programs. We have programs for... We have children's programs for Christmas, Halloween, and other activities. She always baked the cookies for these programs, and the kids just loved her to death. We would also have children dancing, and she would dance with the children. And the children always say, "Does she do a different dance than we do?" Because I'm the founder of the Queens and Kings Dance Group of Salisbury, where on occasion she would be there, and I would always call her up front and ask her if she would like to dance. She loved dancing. She says, "One day, I'm gonna master this thing." So she did. She donated, as Karen was not only our mayor, but our friend on the West End. Matter of fact, one time she told me, she says, "Now, you gotta vote for me." And I said, "Well, I'm Democrat, and you're Republican. How can I vote for you?" So she said, "Well, at least tell me you will." She will be truly missed by many of us on the West End. May she rest in peace. I would like to share this picture with you of Karen and myself. I was asked to be the public speaker, the keynote speaker at the VA. And I just couldn't decide. I didn't want to face all those people and my fellow coworkers. I've worked at the VA for thirty-one years, and I said, "No." But she said, "No? Now, I want you to do it. I'll stand beside you." And of course, she stood beside me as I made the speech at the VA Medical Center. Otherwise, I don't think I would have made it. But I will cherish this picture of her with me. And Hercules Shannon is on here also, and many of you might know her. But I will cherish this, and it will stay in my room forever. Karen will be missed by a lot of people whom she talked to as mayor of Salisbury. She was truly a friend, and she was one of these people that you could tell that she did it from the heart. She didn't do it because she was mayor. So I'd like to thank everybody for allowing me to speak about my good friend Karen.
Thank you, Ms. Karen. Anyone else like to speak? Seda?
Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Seda Trautman. I'm the Downtown Director for Salisbury. For those who don't know, and I apologize, but I echo Connie's sentiments. I need to read this so that I can hopefully get through it. I met Mayor Alexander for one of the first times when she showed up to landscape an entire block of Main Street in pearls and a suit, and planted more than a few trees that way, outworking men dressed for the occasion, which I feel is probably a fitting analogy for many feats in her life. and planted more than a few trees that way, outworking men dressed for the occasion, which I feel is probably a fitting analogy for many feats in her life. When I transitioned to working for the city a few years ago, I would often field calls from Mayor while she was at a conference or a meeting in another community because she was always searching for ways Salisbury could continue to grow and progress. Interestingly, she did not usually share or suggest what made those places special or what made them most unique, just what stood out as potential improvements for Salisbury. I believe in Mayor's eyes, we did not need to take what makes other places unique. Salisbury is already unique by itself. As she said more than once, she considered Salisbury the Paris of the Piedmont. And while both Paris and Salisbury are certainly similar in being well-known for special kinds of wine, some pounding cheer wine, Mayor saw both cities as places with such significant and ingrained culture that surely Salisbury already stands out, just as Paris does. As evidenced by that sentiment, her passion for Salisbury was unmatched and her desire to make Salisbury a better place for everyone was evident in every decision she made, every collaborative conversation she facilitated, and every event she attended, which seemed to be every single event in town. I don't know how she had enough time. She took credit for little and is responsible for so much. She took time to know each person that worked around her, not for political or professional gain, but because she genuinely cared about each person in her orbit. She not only worked with grace and skill and confidence, she instilled that in those fortunate enough to work with and around her. Mayor may leave a legacy of pearls and perfectly tailored suits. She also leaves a legacy of empathetic and hands-on leadership that has shaped Salisbury for the better. She told me in a recent text, she's grateful for people who lead with head and heart, something she had mastered in her own career. I feel comfortable in saying Mayor Alexander touched each of our lives in profound ways and I'm so grateful to Mayor and to her family for her passion and for sharing her life with all of us. Thank you.
Thank you Saida. Hey Chief.
Mayor Protam, council, it's certainly my honor to be before you tonight to speak in honor of Mayor Alexander and her strong dedication to our city and our workforce. I've served this city for many years. And it's always, it always amazes me to see the dedication of the elected officials here. And Mayor Alexander was just a little different because she went the extra steps to assure that the community was protected and served by the city. She cared about every citizen and every visitor to our city. I recall a conversation with her at the City Goals Retreat most recent wherein she encouraged me to focus on the city's resiliency and sustainability. She wanted to assure that the city could recover from a tough fire, a tough rescue situation, a tough storm, and that the city would be ready at the very next call, the next storm, the next event, and to be resilient. Further, her strong conviction to sustainability was evident in the design of buildings and her outstanding leadership in our city. As you may know, and as has been talked about, Mayor Alexander designed our Fire Station Number Four. We have a lasting memento of her tremendous contributions to the city. We get to operate from it every day. I just want to say that the most impressive or the biggest impression that she made here, as far as I see, as mayor, was her grace. She always was graceful. She talked with the leaders of other communities with grace. She led us with grace. She led by example with grace. It's obvious to anyone who interacted with the mayor that professionalism and grace was important to her in a very big way. In fact, whenever we walked into this council chamber, we expected, we expect to feel the grace from the mayor's chair. I think right now, as we walk into this room, we feel Mayor Alexander's grace. And I'm sure that we will feel her grace for years to come. Her leadership, her professionalism, her dedication, and her ultra level of grace from this point forward. I will conclude by just letting you know that the Salisbury Fire Department and especially the Salisbury Fire Chief considered a blessing to have felt her unwavering support. And we thank God for having Mayor Karen Alexander influence us. Thank you.
Thank you Chief Barnau.
Good evening Mayor Protam, council, family. I'm Hannah Jacobson. I'm the Director of Planning and Neighborhoods. And I have many wonderful memories of Mayor Alexander from working alongside her at blockwork, lunches at the Community Development Corporation, sculpture show events, and collaborating with her on grant applications. But the memory that keeps surfacing for me is one of probably two years ago. It was one of those summer days where the temperature was in the mid-nineties and the humidity made the air feel even thicker. In the heat of the afternoon, a group from Healthy Rowan gathered in the West End near Livingstone to walk the neighborhood. Our task was to do a walk audit, to observe obstacles that might make it more challenging for people to walk around the neighborhood. And as we were ready to take off on our hike, Mayor Alexander drove up in her BMW, dressed in her classic pearls, tailored suit, and high heels. She'd been running late that day. She had had a lunch with officials from the VA Hospital. But undeterred by the mile-plus hike and the sweltering heat, she borrowed a pair of old socks and tennis shoes and proceeded to join us, join the group, the whole time making her classic comments like, "That's outstanding," or "That would be great if." And at the end of the walk, she had to quickly leave. She had to come record proclamations and then to, of course, chair the City Council meeting. And I think, you know, what strikes me about this memory, aside from the fact it's the only time I ever saw her wear tennis shoes, is just how typical of a day that was for Mayor Alexander. She just ran from meeting to meeting to meeting and she was just tireless. She was always full of enthusiasm and optimism for things that were both big and small, things that were both complicated and simple. She saw possibility in people and in their ideas in a way that made folks feel legitimacy and dignity. She's been an ever-present influence in nearly every project that I've had the honor to work on during my time in Salisbury. And it'll, as been alluded to, it'll be hard to walk anywhere, to go anywhere in Salisbury without seeing what feels like little love notes from Mayor Alexander to the community. She was an ardent supporter of the arts. She was a champion for homeownership. She was a visionary for multimodal transportation and a role model for women in leadership. The passion, kindness, and poise were the themes that I saw repeated again and again in Mayor's life with council, with the community, with city staff. Ever the public servant, she has left us with enduring lessons for how to be a government official, but really for lessons for how to live a full life. Thank you, dear mayor.
Thank you Hannah. Anyone else like to come and speak?
Good evening, for the family. Mayor Protam, council. My name is Jamelle Black. I'm the current president of the Salisbury Rowan NAACP. I had a great pleasure working with Mayor Alexander on many projects, whether that was one MBB, to be the first, you know, to bring that type of program, to be the first small city to have that type of program, to her being on the kickoff field when we competing against another team. Mayor Alexander was truly special. It's not a Freedom Fund banquet that the NAACP had that she missed. Only one she missed was the last one that we had. I had the pleasure of receiving the key to the city from Mayor Alexander in council. Mayor Alexander was sick that day. She wasn't feeling well, but she still showed up. As a type of mayor that we cherish as leaders to work with, especially in my line of work, to definitely call out the things that we need to call out. But she knew that. It was something different about me too. I didn't always want to have conversation to be able to call the negative out. We wanted to have conversation to represent the positive. And it's a lot of positive that came from Mayor Alexander, of course, to the support of the city in council. It's no one that's gonna be able to fulfill the mayor's shoes. But what we can do is pick up the mantle that the mayor has left and run with it. Make sure we stay fast and continue to focus on the things that the mayor has set us up for, working together, creating partnerships, being intentional with those partnerships, showing up. So I'm grateful that I had, under my presidency, that I worked with a strong mayor that was open to allow the NAACP to have a sit at the table. So thank you. She was one of a kind. She absolutely was. She supported our mission, our vision. We didn't see eye to eye sometimes, but when we left that office or wherever space we was in, we had a common understanding on how we was gonna move Salisbury forward. And I know that this council will continue to move Salisbury forward. So we look forward to building even stronger partnership in the legacy of Mayor Alexander. So thank you all.
Thank you Jamelle.
I can truly say that I have known Mayor Alexander almost as long as anyone else. And I would always say, "My mayor, my mayor, we've had good times." We used to do blockwork, work in the dirt. She didn't mind getting her hands in the dirt. We planted trees, we laughed. We planted flowers, we laughed. We've had good times. But the road got rough and rocky. When God got ready to take Mayor Alexander home, they went and picked the most beautiful flower to have to take her in the gate. She don't have to worry about no more pain, no more sorrow. She at home now and she's gonna be that same mayor in heaven that she was down here so long.
Thank you chief.
I'm a crybaby, so Mayor Protam Commission. My name is Annie Boom Carroll. I'm the owner operator Boom Carroll Furniture Home. But it doesn't have anything to do with Boom Carroll Furniture Home tonight. It's all about the person that I met and fell in love with, and that was Mayor Alexander. One thing that we can learn from her is okay to listen to people, even if you don't agree with them. But she always took the time to listen with the same smile she got on her face right there. So we can learn from her. I've learned from her. I had experienced some things in life with talking to her and she would give me comfort. But just knowing that she just treated me like I was somebody when I know I wasn't what her stabbed her. But she was a sweetheart lady. And family, what you can take from her and from me, she was a person that touched, I guess, everybody in the state of North Carolina. Because I called a housework last week talking to a client and believe it or not, she told me that Ms. Mayor Alexander was an architect. And I didn't know that. And she had been all over that way doing work and touching lives. So I can say to everyone, we have lost a jewel, but heaven hath given angel. And I love her dearly. Thank you so much for sharing it with us.
Thank you Annie.
Good evening. I thought about this for a minute. Henry? And what I wanted to share was the last email, text I got from the mail. And she said, "I'm feeling better. Just getting tired quickly. Trying to limit my time at the office to about six hours a day. This week has been busy. I hope to see you soon." I said, "Thanks. How about four hours?" "Prayers are continuing for you." She said, "You sound just like Henry." I said this on Saturday and it's in my heart. It goes like this. "Remembrance is all I ask, for if it be a task. For it's better to remember and forget than to remember and regret. Love you much. My prayers are with you."
Thank you DeeDee. Anyone else like to speak?
City council and family. My name is Michael Brooks and I currently serve as the president of Salisbury Pride. And I want to say how much I appreciate all that Mayor Alexander did to help move equality forward for the city of Salisbury and all citizens, including members of the LGBTQ plus community. As mayor, she signed proclamations for Transgender Day of Visibility, Transgender Day of Remembrance, and for Pride Month. In addition, she attended and actively participated in the Pride Festival. One of my favorite moments from last year's Pride Festival is Mayor Alexander leading the rainbow walk and proudly waving a rainbow flag. This visible display of support is incredibly important from a mayor and city council members because it showed how the city leadership literally walks the walk in fulfilling the mission of creating a Salisbury that is welcoming and inclusive for everyone. In 2024, Mayor Alexander, along with all city council members, were the recipients of the Salisbury Ally Award for Extending Community Leadership and Longtime Support of Salisbury Pride. Mayor Alexander's forward-thinking, passionate leadership, empathetic ear, and love of Salisbury are just a few of the reasons that this city is a great place to live. On another note, I have been a city employee for almost a year and I had the privilege of working with Mayor Alexander here in City Hall. During that time, not only did I get to see Mayor Alexander in action with her duties for the city, I was lucky to experience her kindness and warmth. Regardless of how busy she was, and let me be clear, she was a working mayor, she always took the time to say a kind word, to listen, or simply to check in to see how I was doing. These seemingly small acts made a huge impact on me, especially as a new employee. Mayor Alexander did so much for the city of Salisbury and the community. I am fortunate to have known her. Thank you.
Anne? Mayor Protam, members of council. You know, they say, it's interesting, you know, the marks of greatness are when you have a one-word are when you have a one-word moniker, right? And when everybody who talks about you says the same thing. How about that? So I thought we had more time. I was stunned by the news of Mayor Alexander's passion, passing. The shock gave way to grief and immense sadness. It took some time. But after a few people reached out to me, I started to think of the precious gift that I had been given in Karen K. Alexander. This amazing woman, who on a personal and professional level absolutely meant the world to me and who touched lives and made an immeasurable impact far greater than we will ever know. My name is Anne Little, and I've been a part of Team Salisbury since February of 2018. And I have served as Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion since November of 2021. Our department has been housed on the second floor of City Hall for almost three years, placing us in direct contact with our highest-ranking city official, Karen K. Alexander, or Mayor, as we respectfully and affectionately called her. You know, there's a saying that goes, "It takes a village." Mayor often referred to our City Hall team as her village. She was everywhere for everybody, all the time. She was from Washington DC to Raleigh, across the globe, across the street. She was across town. She was at birthday parties and ribbon cuttings and board meetings, sporting events, you name it. Especially if she was asked. She did her level best to be there, wherever there might be. Once during a work session with one of our consulting teams, who actually came to start calling her our mayor, you know, their mayor, one of the consultants used the phrase, "Our audio has to match our video." Mayor took ownership of those words, and she made them her own and used them to hold us all accountable to be a Salisbury for all. Every once in a while, I had the privilege to share some quiet moments with her. We talked about family. We talked about the Bargain Garden section at Lowe's. We talked about doing a better job of work-life balance and how Henry was going to fuss at her for staying so late. We talked about cooking. We talked about all sorts of things. She was warm. She was humble. And she was kind. But she was also, in her words, "A steel Magnolia." She was a force to be reckoned with, particularly when it came to serving this community. Once she decided that she was going to go door to door delivering letters to make good on her word, to share some information with some community members who had reached out to her with some concerns. And so there were a bunch of us who didn't think that was such a good idea. And so Kelly Baker and I decided that we were going to go in her office. You know, we had all talked, the team had talked. Kelly Baker and I were going to go in her office, and we were going to let her, we were going to change her mind about this. And so, of course, we sat in front of her, we had a very brief chit chat. And Mayor looked at us and said, "Now, what are you two up to?" And so we continued to say, "Well, you know, Mayor, I mean, you know, we don't think it's a good idea." You know, we talked, we tried our best to talk her out of it. But you know how that went, right? And in the end, at her insistence, we delivered those letters so that she could make good on her word. But it also, we also saw the impact as it bridged the gap. And someone who had a concern felt that their concerns are truly important to us, to the city. In November of this, of last year, we were preparing to host a gathering of state human relations professionals and DEI personnel. And I was reviewing the program agenda with Mayor when we got to the section that was for greetings from the city of Salisbury. I wasn't sure that she would feel up to doing it, so I had put greetings from the city of Salisbury, and I just put city council. And so we got to that spot, and she looked at me and she says, "Well, I wanted to do that." She said, "I thought I told you I was going to do that." And I was like, "Oh, yeah, of course, Mayor, you know, that was just a placeholder." We had a wonderful event. She spoke, not only doing greetings, but engaged in the session, talking about our city. And of course, she won the hearts and respect of our colleagues from across the state. It wasn't always easy. There were difficult times and issues. And I can remember, I can recall, there were times when my response in such situations where there may have been adversity or conflict, my response was emotional. And she always chided me, firmly saying, "Follow the process, Anne. We have to always follow the process." Well, I'm having a difficult time following the process this evening. I miss her. Very selfishly, my heart aches at her absence. My heart aches for her family. My heart aches for all of us. But as processes move from stage to stage, I am incredibly thankful for the life, for the gift, and the blessing of Karen K. Alexander. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Anyone else who would like to come up and speak? Chief Smith, did you want to come up?
There's been a ringing on that side, so I'm going to sit on this side and see if it takes it away. It's with a heavy heart that I sit before you today to honor and reflect the remarkable life of Mayor Karen Alexander. I had the privilege of knowing Karen long before she entered the political arena. And a year since, I have been deeply impacted by her leadership, her wisdom, and her friendship. Karen was more than just a mayor. She was a mentor to me and many, many others. She taught me the importance of serving something greater than ourselves. She understood that leadership wasn't about power or prestige. It was about serving the community with integrity, humility, and a deep commitment to its well-being. Throughout her career, Karen was a steady hand. Whether as an architect, guiding the physical landscape of Salisbury, or if it was as a mayor, shaping the policies that guided our city, she always approached her work with grace, professionalism, and a genuine love for this community. Her ability to bring people together, to find common ground, and to move forward in unity is something that we all need to strive for. I had the honor of witnessing her navigate difficult challenges and conflict with an unmatched poise. No matter the issue, she remained approachable, open, and willing to listen, always prioritizing what was the best for the people of Salisbury. I know I'm not alone when I say that she made me a better person. She made me a better leader. And she's made me a better public servant. I was fortunate enough to witness her dedication firsthand, especially during the most trying times. Even as she battled illness, Karen gave her best effort, often under circumstances that would be way too much for most. It was nothing short of extraordinary. Her resilience, even in the face of her own suffering, was a testament to her commitment to the people of Salisbury. It's a level of dedication that few could ever match, and it's something that I will never forget. Her influence and lessons that she imparted will guide me for many years to come to Karen's husband, Henry, and son, Daniel, and everyone else who loved Karen. Please know that you are in our thoughts and prayers during this difficult time. We stand with you in honoring a life well-lived and a legacy that will continue to inspire and impact our community for generations. While Karen will be greatly missed, her presence will remain in the heart and spirit of Salisbury. Every project that she championed, every life that she touched, every piece of her vision that became reality will continue to echo through the streets of Salisbury. Her impact is woven into the fabric of Salisbury, and her influence will be felt for decades. Rest in peace, my dear friend. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and members of council.
Thank you, Chief Smith. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before we close this agenda? Seeing no one, I just want to thank everybody for being here. I did mention earlier, in respect for the meeting, in the business part of the meeting, if there was anyone who had a public comment about a different matter, if you do, please come forward now. Seeing no one, we'll close the public comment. We'll move on to the city attorney's report.
My report tonight, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you.
Move on to the city manager's report.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jam. Move on to council comments. Any comments? Mayor Pro Tem comments. The only thing I could say is, I've looked left for eight years at her. I've always been on this side of the dials. And it's been a privilege. I would like to go ahead and move on to the mayor's announcements. The Human Relations Commission will host the annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration Saturday, January 18th through Monday, January 20th, 2025. The weekend kicks off with a parade Saturday, January 18th at 11:00 AM, followed by a Community Resource Fair from 11:00 AM until 1:30 PM at the Civic Center. The MLK Breakfast will take place on Monday, January 20th at 8:30 AM at the Civic Center. Admission to the breakfast is free, but registration is required. The Civic Center is located at 315 Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue. For more information, please contact Anne Little at 704-638-5218. The only other announcement that I would like to add is that the city will be hosting a memorial in honor of Mayor on January 13th at 5:30 at the Bell Tower Green. Again, before I make a motion to adjourn, I'd like to thank the family for giving us this time tonight, for the city employees and us to share how we feel and to let you know what she meant to us. So thank you all for being here tonight. I just want to say that we all loved her and we'll miss you, Mayor Alexander. If I could get a motion for adjourn. A motion. All those in favor, say aye.